Another great day to be in Catawba County. We all gather and come together about something that's very exciting for the future of our area. And we're really excited to welcome you here at the Top Valley Community College or Corporate Development Center. This used to be an old steakhouse, as they call it, but we decided it could be used for something better to help build this community. And I think we've accomplished that with a number of individuals that use this facility on a regular basis. And these things are all happening in a moment in time in our history where it's becoming a catalyst for a momentum that we're building here for the future of this region. And so we're very excited to have all of you here. I'd like to recognize a few individuals that are here. James SD is here. He's the regional representative for U.S. Senator Tom Tillis. James? Also have North Carolina Commerce Secretary Tony Copeland is here. Tony, right here. Have North Carolina Senator Andy Wells is here. And North Carolina House of Representatives, Mr. Jay Adams is here. And of course, we always welcome all of our county commissioners and our municipally-elected officials and staff to our campus as we are partners as we go forward. I'd also like to recognize the EDC staff that's present today and our EDC Board Chairman, Ms. Robin Nifferson, is here. And so we're very excited to have you on our campus. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mayor Hank Giff and Chairman of County Commissioners, Randy Ippel.
Thank you, Dr. Giff, gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Hickory City Council. All city council members are present, and we do have to call.
We will also call to order the Catawba County Board of Commissioners to authorize the presence of the board. And also call to order the Tribune Corporate Center Board, all those board members present, and we also have to call.
At this time, I would like to call Mr. Scott Mallard, head of the Catawba County Economic Development Corporation, to the podium.
Just got here, thank you. Good morning, everyone. It is indeed a great day for Catawba County. And to use a favorite statesman's terms in Stein Eisenhower, and I think everybody who knows Stein knows that one of the statements that he's famous for is "A day out of Catawba County is a day in waste." I certainly agree with you. We'll try and convince others of that as we move through this presentation. I'm very happy to bring forward an opportunity for you to consider during this public hearing. And I'll bring to mind information regarding Project Wave. Project Wave has taken many turns and twists during the opportunity that we've been looking at since January of 2018. We started working with them. Initially, the look was at the Baker Building on the Grand Parkway. That's a very large and nice facility here in Catawba County, and it speaks to the opportunities that exist with existing facilities. We keep talking about the need for good, high-ceiling, and marketable product. I'm sure Secretary Copeland recognizes across the state the dire shortage of existing buildings out there. And so we're always trying to develop those opportunities. This project started as a search for a building of that type, and the driver for that was the ability to install equipment in that facility, hopefully no later than July. We're a little later than July right now, by the way. But that was, became more and more of a challenge trying to tie down that building. And it turns out that that building was not available in order to make this project a reality in that location. Suddenly, other options became on the table. That included other facilities outside of Catawba County, including other areas around Mecklenburg County in North and South Carolina, looking for those ready buildings in order to meet their timeframe. There were also greenfield site opportunities that had been considered that were pushed, speaking to the availability of ready sites. So as you may be aware, we've been developing what is now known as Trivium Corporate Center. At the time, we've been developing it for ready sites. It's a certified site and ready for development. All the engineering is in place on that site. And that was, became a contender for the opportunities that the company was presenting. We tried to work hard to make that site a solid contender. And I'd like to recognize Chairman Eisenhower in his role as the Trivium Corporate Center Board of Directors Chairman to talk for just a moment about Trivium Corporate Center and the vision that the city and the county planners have had for that property. Chairman, like.
Thank you. Good morning. The Trivium Corporate Center, the vision, 270 acres and a very pastoral setting right nearby here. Near amenities, near good infrastructure, roads, less than an hour from the International Airport, near CBCC, and near, well, around the university. So this is a vision of a Class A facility for clean, high-tech, ironing business, much like Traver Park. The county commissioners, we took a field trip along the same as Traver Park a year or so ago to talk to some of those developers. This was supported in 2014. The county commission had a public hearing where we resumed this and worked very well with the city of Hickory. As part of the city of Hickory's also part of our program. It was groundbreaking in May of 2018. And we've been proactive. This board, Trivium Corporate Center Board, has met monthly.
Seven each.
Not only for the secretary, I know he's having coffee at 6:00 p.m. and then Rob is having coffee. But we've met monthly. We've been proactive. We've had improvements, berm, landscaping, developed brands, worked with infrastructure and worked with signage. Somebody took a little picture. The next line. The next line I'm saying. That this met all the greenfield criteria for our client. The site civil engineering team was already in place. It was close to proximity to the company's engineering team. It was proximity to CBCC's Workforce Solutions Center, which will obviously go online soon to provide needed jobs and training. And we've developed, this board was proud of developing environment, worked with covets, conditions, architectural guidelines, the landscaping, the berms, the walking trails. Also, we're ready for that first, for that first client. And then obviously, the city and the County Making Committee to purchase this property to develop and work within the county. So Trivium Corporate Center has not been an abstract, hopeful, wishful project. It has been and continues to be a working project that we're developing. We're excited about that. At this time, I'd like Scott to come back, Mr. Mallard.
He can give us swiftly.
With the clicker. He will give us an overview of Project Wave, but also some specifics with regard to the incentives and other action that is before our respective boards, the possible actions to do.
What is Project Wave? It's a $60 million commitment by the company in real estate and personal property for the facility. It's a commitment by a company that manufactures in a high-tech environment, a clean environment, and low impact, similar to the vision that we had when Trivium Corporate Center was developed. As was mentioned by the chairman, Traver Business Park was a model for the facility that we are, or the park-type setting that we're talking about. And we feel like this client is a prime contender and meets all of those conditions. It's a new construction facility. We'll be showing you in just a moment the rendering of that facility. It's 27, it requires 27 and a half acres, thereabouts. It's 210,000 square feet of production space plus office and other spaces that are going to be required for the operations of this facility, including warehousing. It is designed to facilitate rapid expansion. It's believed that the product that we're talking about that will be made in this has a great demand by the marketplace, and therefore designing the facility ready for expansion was a necessary requirement for the site itself. As a matter of fact, as a part of this agreement, we've included a four-and-a-half-acre roughly optioned site to be included in the package for the expansion needs as the company design makes those needs. Here's a vision of the site plan that's proposed, and there's a hard copy that will remain up here for your inspection afterwards. But this is the 27 and a half acres. As you enter into the main entrance, the gated, not gated, but the bermed and landscaped entrance into the park, you will enter down to the site, and the site will be on the right-hand side of the road that is currently under construction into that Trivium Business Park site. We think it will be a fantastic first project for the Trivium Corporate Center, and this is a little bit more details on the site itself. Let's talk more about the company itself. It's a 167-year-old company. It's got manufacturing and engineering all over the globe, including U.S., Mexico, India, China, and other companies all over the world. It's a Fortune 500 company, as you would suspect with being that old. It's 46,000 employees worldwide. 2017 sales were well over $10 billion. It's got six other facilities in North Carolina. Pretty stellar resume for us not to let you know yet who the company is. The other contractual requirements that are involved with this. As a result of this project and the commitments that they have made, the equipment will be placed into operational condition in place by December of 2020. There will be 75 net new jobs that will be created by that same timeframe, with salaries averaging $50,000 a year or greater. In addition, by two years, three years later, there will be an additional 35 net new jobs that will be created at that facility with those same salary requirements. So the initial announcement in this facility that our commitment is 110 jobs at that salary level that we're talking about. Realize that the contractual requirements here will require that the company maintain those jobs for a period of three years after the last incentive payment will be made to the company. It's going to be explained in here in just a minute. There are always the standard conditions of default in the event of a failure by the company to live up to the contractual requirements that are required. Oftentimes, they're referred to as clawbacks. In this instance, there are certain contractual requirements that make the company committed to the project for an extended period of time. The proposed incentives for the project at 110 jobs would equal a grant based on new tax receipts that are accruing to this county and the city for a period of three years as a result of them creating that job. 50% of those receipts would be shared back to the company for a period of three years. If they extended the, this is sort of the incentive part of it, we put a little hook out there to try and encourage the company to commit to greater jobs or create more jobs on the site. And if they create 140 new jobs, they will get an extra year added on to that incentive period of three years. Likewise, if they do, if they create 175 new jobs in the facility, then there would be another additional year added on for a total period of five years. I'll go into the amounts of those in just a moment. There would also be a grant of 27.435, let's say roughly, acres that would be gifted to the company as a result of the commitment that they are making to the city and the county. The also, infrastructure would also be provided by the city and the county and the Trivium Corporate Center to extend those utilities to the site boundary in order for the company to hook up to those. There would also be an option provided to the company for the ability to purchase that additional acreage tract for about four and a half acres until April of 2021, which coincides with the time period for the remainder of the property to be acquired by the city and the county and Trivium Corporate Center. Also mentioned that labor was part of the issue as the company was making a decision where to locate. Any of you all that attended the EDC's annual meeting a few weeks ago realize that we talked about the issues that are associated with low unemployment, which is certainly creating new dynamic for companies as they consider locating in North Carolina, in Catawba County, or really anywhere in the United States where there's unemployment, average of somewhere around 3% to 4%. So we wanted to make a commitment to the company. Our community has done a great job led by the chamber and the EDC involving military recruitment. And so we've been doing this initiative that goes out to military bases around the state and now looking beyond to encourage people that are retiring from military service to locate to Catawba County and take some of the jobs. To our knowledge, there are very few, if any, municipalities that are as aggressive in going out to these communities and of, or the military community, inviting them for weekends at our cost to Catawba County in order to explore the workforce environment here and the jobs that they could make should they move. We committed the program that would go specifically to a few of these military bases in order to recruit for the company that we're talking about. Here's a little bit more detail on the proposed job incentive. The math on that is such that 50% of the receipts that would be netted to the community for each year after the investments are made would be granted back. The first three years, the county maximum would be 172,500. The city maximum would be $169,950. So the commitment for the first three years is locked in. Now, that could be impacted by depreciation and other factors that is likely to skew those numbers lower than the maps that we're talking about. However, that's the contractual maximum basis. Should the company create those additional jobs that I referenced, 140 and 175, then they would be eligible for that additional incentive that's pictured on the chart here. And therefore, they'd be able to receive up to $862,500 from the county and $849,750 from the city. I'd like, I've kept y'all pinned to the needles long enough. Let me ask Mr. Barry and Warren Wood to come forward and let you know who the identity of this company is going to be. Here's the site rendering of the facility. I think you'll see and agree that this is a phenomenal rendering for a building, particularly the first location in the park. As people enter into the park, they'll be able to see this. I'd like to point out how much time and effort went into designing where the sun should be on this pattern. I'd like to commend Licker and Company for the design of this render, and I think it's been sort of fun for us to talk about how much time and effort went into this render. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that either board, city or county board, the Trivium Corporate Center board may have at this time.
We're just construction stuff.
Should the project be approved today, I would think that equipment will be mobilizing on the site, potentially this afternoon. It really is technically a time frame requirement, and the expectation is if it's not today, it will be in the next week or so, at noon.
Any further questions? Trivium Corporate. I want to have a question, Stacey. I think Charlie Dixon would be very proud of that.
Any further questions from the city council? At this time, I'd like to call to order an opening of the public hearings for the city here.
We will also open the public hearings for Catawba County and for the Trivium Board. These public hearings will run concurrently, so if anybody wishes to make any comments for or against these incentives or proposed actions by the Trivium Board, you're welcome to go forward and we'll be there carefully.
No one wishing to speak in opposition or in favor? With being no one wishing to speak, I'll close the public hearing for the city here.
We'll close the public hearing for Catawba County and the Trivium Board.
At this time, I will entertain a motion of the city of Hickory from the council to execute an economic development agreement with the terms and conditions and requirements discussed, along with clawbacks, a resolution, and any other necessary documents to complete this presentation. I have a motion and I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion's carried.
For the board commissioners, at this time, I would like to have a motion to authorize the EDC's economic development agreement with the terms and conditions and requirements discussed, along with clawbacks, a resolution, and any other documents necessary for that resolution. A motion by Sheriff Bailey, any discussion? All voters say aye. When the votes are passed, you may move ahead. And also for the Trivium Board, we would need a motion to authorize the resolution, the advance of the special warranty deed to the subdivision left, and approval of the option for purchase. So moved. A motion by Mr. Layle. We're going to the second last.
I'll be right, second best. Thank you, terrible, awful, big one, has been completely performed. Charge.
Very much as, so continue the discussion on this action from the Trivium Board. Now, all voters say aye. Any opposed? That also passes to you next.
With that, I'd like Secretary Tony Copeland, Secretary of Department of Commerce for the state of North Carolina, to come forward. Thank you for attending this morning. Thank you for your support and leadership for the state.
You know, Scott, it's always a pleasure to come when we're creating jobs. In the interest of fair disclosure, I was a telecom executive for about a decade, so I was a customer. A big customer of that, thousands of miles of fiber optics, and I want, it was a pleasure of working, also a pleasure of working directly on the development team here, Scott Mallard and his crew. But I've had hearings, they kept saying the vision and the future and why they're, you know. I look at your corporate center here, and I look at around the state, and everyone tells me, we've got to put that site in for economic development. Well, until you've got the infrastructure and what you have in place, it's just, and the vision that you've done to create a site like this is incredible and necessary. There are two things that any economic development project has to make it successful, and no budget will come without those two. The first is a trainable workforce. What you have done, you've got your college here, you've got your university system. The state of North Carolina has been, since the '50s, putting a lot of money in education and paying on. You've got to continue doing that to create the future also. The other thing is infrastructure. Without infrastructure, no company can come either. And that's another thing that we continually ask the legislature for. We're going to continue to do that. Governor Cooper put infrastructure around the state. Unlike some, you're not like some counties. There's some counties that are 40 miles from the natural gas line. They will never get named a better. That's just a reality. There are 25 counties in the state that are losing population. They don't have gas lines. They don't have infrastructure. They don't have airports. You are sitting in the middle of the universe with what you're doing. And for that, I think the governor is thankful and going to help you. I want to congratulate all of you, and especially Corning, for creating 110 jobs here. I want to talk about Corning. Corning has been a big presence in North Carolina since the '70s with millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars, perhaps billions of dollars of investment. Nearly 5,000 employees today are Corning. When Governor Cooper assumed office a little over a year and a half ago, this is approaching two years now, you're CEO of the first executive business in the country. And it was not necessarily pretty tight. We were in the middle of some big social upheavals. HB2 was preventing a lot of companies. Your company stepped up in the middle of that, worked with us, with people goodwill from both sides of the aisle to put millions of dollars in investments. Just recently, I was working with you, they have, they worked with the governor, my department, Corning has worked to put a bifurcated project in both Durham, which is a tier three, we hear about local counties, and Edgecombe County, which is a tier one. And I think it just announced 300,000 more in that project that you already committed to. We are, we're just ecstatic about Corning. You know, North Carolina has been known, the team has been known for state of the minds. What I mean for that, a talented workforce. And we're spending millions of dollars. We've got to continue to do that. Scott, a little into it. We're full of employment now. So without a trainable workforce, companies like you can't execute your business plans or no company can. The governor is committed to working with the legislature to keep that pipeline going. You know, 1950, we were the 47th worst state in the country out of 48 states. It's hard to imagine. Today, we have the second most educated city in America globally and the highest per capita of PhDs in the world, because we're trained. I mean, we're the ninth most populous state in the country, growing by a city, a size of a city of High Point every year. We are really in a sweet spot, in a growth spot. But we've got to continue to work harder and harder to keep it that way. It's not going to happen by, it didn't happen by an accident, and it won't happen by accident. The governor's NC Job Ready Initiative is one of the big things that we're working on with Department of Commerce. I know some of the parent, I'll get about employees and employees and employees. But we've just done a survey, which is sort of shocking. 70% of rural employers that are advertising for employees are not getting any hours. So that says we've got a lot of work to do, to get to work, to have a trainable workforce and continue to do that. But in closing, I want to thank Corning for all of their locations that they have, particularly this one today. And you can never be too rich or too thin, so we want you to have more and more and more here, and we're ready for all of them. I know Scott is and the commissioners. And I want to commend this town though, and go back, for creating the infrastructure here and the environment for economic development. We don't see that everywhere. You're definitely visionary, and whenever Scott Mallard is ready to leave, he has a place in the law.
I'd like to implement some of that throughout the state of North Carolina. Anyway, I want to thank Corning.
Ladies and Secretary Copeland, on behalf of the city of Hickory, we're excited, obviously, to be here today to finally make this announcement. Well, obviously, we've known about it for quite some time, but today's the day that we get to make the announcement. So in partnership, I just want to say this. Everybody in this room has contributed in some way, some form, or some fashion to this partnership, and this has surely been a team effort. So I just want to say thank you to everyone that's in this room. Everybody had a part. You're here today, you had a part in this, and we're extremely glad to have you as a part of our team. I believe that it was Mr. Barry, Mr. Vic Barry, that said in the very beginning, if we don't invest in ourselves, we can't expect anybody else to invest in us. And that is certainly true. That certainly has been the thing, and that is certainly the thing going forward with Corning. Everything that we do in partnership with the county and CBCC and so many other entities, the Chamber of Commerce, is a partnership, and everything that we're doing is driving economic development. Everything that we're doing, we're looking at growing jobs, we're looking at growing population, and we're looking at growing tax base. And Corning certainly does fit into that scenario. So at this time, I would like to So at this time, I would like to invite Dr. Bernard Dorch to the podium, Vice President for Corning and General Manager. If he'll come forward, I'd like to present him with the key to the city.
You can go in there.
Sure. You're in charge. Always. Yeah, thank you very, very much. This is quite an honor. And what I learned from Scott Millar though, with all my travel, I'm wasting a lot of days in my life. So, but thank you, Secretary Tony Coven, very kind words about Corning, trying to do our best as a company, as a corporate citizen. Scott Millar with the Economic Development Group. Mayor, thank you very much. Chairman Andy Eisenhower and Sheriff Robin Nicholson and Chairwoman Gordon Wood. We appreciate this opportunity to participate at this event and your continued support of Corning's scope in North Carolina, specifically in Catawba County. Our Corning's active communication business is again investing in what we call tomorrow's growth today. We're adding cable capacity to maintain our really market leadership worldwide. We want to ensure reliable supply for our customers. As you've heard, we plan for expansions. We believe this market is really, really ripe for bigger growth. Currently, we have five October fiber and cable manufacturing facilities in North Carolina. The other ones are different businesses from Corning, environmental from super businesses. This latest addition in the Tribune, and I haven't actually liked it, somebody actually said I was, so. The Tribune Corporate Center in Hickory underscores Corning's commitment to the county and the local workforce. Corning employs more than 4,000 people in the state. I'm very excited to see that number increase. There's nothing better to do than this as a corporate leader, as our North Carolina team continues to bring October fiber and cable innovations into life. So thank you again very, very much. And we're committed to this family. And thank you for this key. That's really awesome. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'll let you guys see it. I'll go here and just.
We're running back and forth. In the other vision of Tribune, that's coming around for jobs and investments. I remember Tribune Corporate Board, we had a consultant then and he said, you've got good product, but it may be years. You've got to be patient, maybe. We should have given it. And we're so excited that the first client in there is a growing, successful, digital age company, which is again shows the investment that we're making. It creates so many opportunities. And Corning has done so far in its history. It's a coincidence, over the weekend, I wasn't talking to my wife about this project, but she was at a antique store and brought home a vase, it's over 100 years old, and it had Corning in it. And I was excited and I said, can I bring that? She said, well, I don't have it. My wife, for 41 years, who knows me well, said, I'm going to let you back out. I've got a deal on that thing. You're losing the break. So we don't have that here. We are so excited. And this really emphasizes what I call the intangibles in this county. When the Tribune Board met, when the old folks said, please, EDC, your county, the city, it was never about any one person, it was never about any one entity. It was always about the project, which meant it was always about the business and always about the people in this county. And then you had the intangibles when it was coming together and the crunch time, can we make this thing work? When the county and their staff and the city and their staff and the company's staff and the engineers and the permitting people and the contractor guy in the room, have they made it work? And that is indicative of the collaborative, let's get it done, make it work spirit that we have in Catawba County. But I don't have a place for you, 100-year-old place. You have this box, but you can put anything you want to in it with a chemist seal and pen.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. On behalf of the Catawba County Economic Development Corporation Board, I would like to also express my thanks and gratitude and congratulations to Corning for this expansion project and for recognizing the value of being in Catawba County. I also like to recognize the Luper Company for this exceptional role. When this is built, and this is sitting right there at the entrance to the Tribune Corporate Park, and Scott and his staff bringing in other prospective clients, what a great vision for the city. What an awesome, absolutely state-of-the-art and beautiful construction that will be as a landmark for bringing folks in and convincing them that Catawba County is the place to be and Catawba County is progressive and looking forward to having additional clients there. So 110 jobs, what a great thing for our citizens of Catawba County and the area. But what does that really mean to us? So let's round it to just an even hundred, just for discussion purposes. So what do 100 jobs mean? So 100 jobs, in reality, will come out to quite a few more jobs when you figure it all out. So there'll be 100 direct jobs there at Corning, 100 employees, $50,000 salary average, 100 jobs right there at Corning facility. These folks, this business will need suppliers, vendors, professional services, contractors to come in and support the work that's being done. That will be another 36.8 or 37 jobs. Now, all of these folks, you know, some will, are already being citizens of the area, will have some folks moving in. This will be additional housing opportunities, improved housing opportunities. They'll buy cars, they'll go to movies, they'll go out to eat. So our restaurants, the general merchandise, this will create 40, 41 jobs. So all told, 110 jobs that Corning will be developing and creating here in Catawba County, in reality, will be closer to 177, 178 jobs. And we all will benefit from that in addition to all the other wonderful things that will go along with the expansion of this operation here in Catawba County. So what does that equal in dollars? 17.5 million dollar impact to Catawba County. That is awesome, that is wonderful, and definitely something that we all need to celebrate. So again, on behalf of the EDC Board, thank you, Corning, thank you for the decision and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone. I'm at my peril for doing this. I've never done this as an announcement before. I'm recognizing certain people that supported this. And I want to make sure that the Lutz family understands how important they were to this process. This has been a project that has lasted, I think, Nick, when we first went on site talking to the Luts is in 2011 or something like that. So it's taken a while. I want to recognize these guys for having the leadership and the foresight to move forward with the development of this park in sometimes trying situations as well as going a little bit on faith. So thank you all for that leadership that you're showing. There are a lot of other people that have done certain things, engineers, infrastructure providers, other, Kevin Greer, thank you. I mentioned Nick as an early guy, but also Warren and his leadership over time in this park. I also mentioned there were some grants achieved. The current construction that's going on at the site, the burn construction, the landscaping, the entrance road, all of that was funded by a grant that we got through the North Carolina Department of Commerce, thank you, Secretary, and his staff that we have worked with over the years to develop these opportunities. There's about a $671,000 grant that we received from them in order to help build this park on faith again. There are others, the economic development partnership that has a relationship with Corning itself. And then down at the bottom, I didn't mention hardly any last names. I'm scared to death that I'm going to forget somebody, just like I about forgot some of the Corning guys in here as well. Gene, David, I shouldn't even start, but there are plenty of folks that have been involved from the Corning that have pushed this opportunity across the finish line over the last many months. And so we're deeply grateful to you for that effort. But the consultant that Chairman Eisenhower mentioned, Mark Sweeney's on this. There are others in here from a permit standpoint, trying to convince the company that we can get this thing done on time. Luper and that team, making a compelling presentation to the company in order to achieve their business. Lots of folks like that. And so I'm not going to go down the list, you know, if you dug something, but as a citizen, yeah. But they've referenced that this is a community partnership, and it really is. And I'm very proud to be a part of that. And I'm very happy to welcome Corning as the tenant that got announced in this today. So I'll pass it back to you all for formal adjournment.
Is there any further business of the City of Hickory Council? Being no further business, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All of you in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next stand and adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, business of the Board of Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to adjourn. And I'd also like to recognize the Walkers, since we're involved in all this.
That was smart. I'll also point out that there should be a reception set up outside to welcome Corning. So please help yourself to that. Me here will remain in here and there will be some interviews to go on. Tribune Board.
Very dumb of us.
Okay, all in favor of a motion to adjourn from the Board of Commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or adjourned?
I'll give a motion to adjourn from the Tribune Department of Commerce, for adjournment. Okay. Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All adjourned.